It's like church in here, you gotta, you know.
I don't hear your confession.
I need his criticism for having that on.
Can't go to the gym when we get there.
Yes, it has.
Quiet.
No, it's five twenty-nine.
Everybody listen.
That's the right way.
Might be starting. Having the appointed time of five thirty arrived, I'd like to call Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two Committee of the Whole to order. Would you please stand and join me for a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mr. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath. Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman D'Essenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, Quorum is present.
Okay, thank you. I would accept a motion for approval of the January eleventh, twenty twenty-two committee meet, meeting minutes. Second.
Second.
You got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Uh, Madam Treasurer, would you please present your treasurer's report, please?
Yes, Chair Hanauer. The corporate fund in the month of December had a beginning balance of forty-four million, one hundred sixty-eight thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars. We took in total receipts of nine million, seven hundred twenty-two thousand, seventy-three dollars. We had total disbursements in the month of December of eight million, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance in the month of December of forty-five million, seven hundred thousand, four hundred seventy-one dollars. Of that ending balance, Chair Hanauer, at the end of December, we ended with ARPA monies totaling fifteen million, two hundred two thousand, seven dollars. This concludes my report, Chair Hanauer.
All right. Um, thank you, any, uh, questions for the treasurer?
I'm supposed to accept.
Got a motion, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Uh, any questions regarding the OBM contract report? Okay, um, there's no presentations. Um, next we have ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. Um, do we have any that, or Mr. Clerk, you want to read those first?
Sure, twenty twenty-one, three thirty-six, twenty twenty-one, three thirty-seven, twenty twenty-one, three seventy, twenty twenty-one, three seventy-one.
Okay, anybody have any action on any of those? Alderman McMiniman.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we're ready to move twenty twenty-one, three seventy-one. I'll explain the, the, the motion. Uh, last week I met with the store director, Mr. Chris, Chris, uh, Greg, and, uh, what they want to do there is, at the convenience store, they currently sell beer and wine, and they want to go to beer, wine, and spirits. So, we, he's a, he's agreeable to, um, going ahead with this, excluding the fifty-mil and the hundred-mil spirit bottles. And, uh, we met in person on that, and we shook hands on it, and, uh, he's good with it. So, with that being agreed to, I'd like to make a motion to, for this, um, amendment here that, uh, our City Corporation Council prepared.
I think, don't we have to, uh, make a motion to pull it out and put it on either debate or consent, first?
Second.
All right, now we can go to the amendment.
Now, we can read it. Twenty twenty-one, three seventy-one, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class C liquor licenses by one and increase the number of Class B liquor licenses by one for Hy-Vee Incorporated doing business as Hy-Vee C Store located at ten twenty-five Outer Park Drive.
Motion for consent.
Thank you.
Is there a motion for amendment now?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so, uh, you should have the amendment, uh, before you, and there's red language that says, provided however, the licensee shall not offer for sale alcoholic products packaged in fifty-mil or hundred-millimeter containers. We want to strike the word products and add the word spirits. Um, that's what the agreement was with this, the store director. So I'll make a motion to, for that amendment.
Second.
I have a question on that, if you don't mind, Alderman. Uh, do they sell these in the store itself?
Yeah, they do, and we, we know there's kind of an inconsistency there. Um, and he's going to review that policy as well. They, they, by the store, you mean in the liquor store, yes, they do. And, uh, he's gonna think about that policy. We had quite a good discussion. He fully understands the concealment opportunity for the, um, small bottles, and that what we're trying to do is limit the extent to which the small bottles can get into the wrong hands in the wrong situations for the wrong purposes. And he even demonstrated how easy it is to slip a, you know, a hard liquor small bottle from one person to the next. And so, that's what we're trying to do, we're just trying to limit the opportunity for the transfer of the concealed liquor in that manner.
I guess my only issue is, is we got, you know, we've got liquor stores and we have other grocery stores throughout the city that sell these sized bottles, and I've, I've never, I'm not aware that there's a huge issue, but, uh, I mean, I, that's just what, I, I'm just kind of confused by this, but I'm not going to belabor it if, you know.
I think, I think Alderman McMiniman's concern is that this is for the gas station, it's for the convenience store. So, he wants to make it a little harder for them to get the smaller bottles, the store is okay with it, I say we move forward.
Yeah, I'm good with it then, that's fine. I just wanted to ask that question. Okay, so.
We got a question.
I'm sorry, Alderman Redpath.
No.
That's correct.
Just Hy-Vee.
Hy-Vee, okay.
Um, just, Alderman Redpath, I think your mic is off. Can't have that.
Hello?
I'm sure that wasn't deliberate at all.
Be a couple of months. Don't need a microphone, you know that.
Right. Okay, so we have a motion for amended, for amendment, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. We've got one present. Okay, now we have, uh, uh, could I have a motion, uh, for, for this as amended?
Motion for consent.
Motion for consent.
A motion for consent as amended?
Second.
Okay, motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Mr. Clerk.
Noted. CWLP, twenty twenty-two, zero zero two, an ordinance authorizing an additional one-year contract extension with ProCom Services of Illinois Incorporated under proposal number UE eighteen dash zero five, CWP Collection Services for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Got a motion, a second for consent, any, any questions, Alderman Redpath?
Yeah, can you tell me, Director, or Madam Treasurer, if this, is this, uh, are we working in conjunction with our, our collection stuff, with, uh, the other things we're doing at the city, like with the treasurer's office and the legal? I mean, are we using the same format?
Uh, no, the, I mean, these are, there's slightly different, different contracts that are, that are being used.
Okay.
The, these would be for the, like, for example, pass to electric and water, uh, collections, not fines or.
Right.
So is there a whole different process?
Yeah, to some extent, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Alderwoman Conley.
Sorry, Doug, um, just real quickly, I understand the treasurer's office, um, when, when things are moved to collections, the city no longer pays that collection fee? So, is that the same model that you're using for this? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, zero zero three, an ordinance accepting proposal number UE twenty-one dash nineteen with Fitzgerald Equipment Incorporated for leasing for forklifts in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and eighty cents for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Got a mo, got a motion, a second for consent?
Uh, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, zero zero four, an ordinance accepting proposal number UW twenty-two dash twenty-two with Calgon Carbide Corporation for the purchase of powdered activated carbine in an amount not to exceed four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Got a motion, a second for consent, any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, zero zero five, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the city's corporate ARPA funds to the Water ARPA Fund to authorize and accept proposal number UW twenty dash twenty-two with Exum Water Care Incorporated for the purchase of lake recirculation equipment in the amount not to exceed five hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the Office of Public Utilities.
For debate?
Second.
A motion, second for debate, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alder.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could have an explanation of this tonight? Or do you want to wait till next week?
So, uh, you know, basically what we had experienced last summer with the taste and odor, you know, with the water, um, kind of explaining, um, you know, some of that, uh, those issues, uh, we, you know, did, you know, Todd did a pretty good, uh, presentation on, uh, the reasons why, but, you know, essentially, you know, this, it kind of relates to what we think is poor circulation, you, you say, in the water, uh, in the lake, and what these devices do is, uh, when you place them out on the lake, they, they, they pull that water from down and then release it back up, okay? So you're stirring the lake, and this process, it actually, so the, it, um, there, there's a lot of technical things that it does. I guess you might say that Todd could be, explain a little bit better, but, um, essentially, that's what we're doing, and it improves the, the taste and odor issues. So the contract that was just approved before, you know, carbon, uh, purchasing, we use carbon to help with that process too, but it's not enough. We can't pump enough carbon into the system for that to, uh, completely remove taste and odor. So, we, we have to have something else that is going to aid in that, and then this is one of the devices that is, uh, you know, there's thirteen of them, um, and they're, they're one of the cheaper options to do so.
Are there other communities with similar water supplies that utilize these devices?
I would say, a majority of the communities do not do anything like that. They have taste and odor issues. But our, our, you know, as you can tell, our, our customers, uh, the cities, the citizens of Springfield and surrounding communities are used to that high premium quality of water for, that has, you know, a good taste and a good odor that these other communities normally don't have access to because of these issues. Want anything, Todd?
Yeah, so I guess is, although, you know, they're, the installations are probably in a minority of the water systems across the United States, I mean, they are used prevalently in communities that are trying to com, proactively combat taste and odor issues. Um, Bloomington uses these devices, Otter Lake uses these devices, those are probably the two closest that I know that has implemented this technology.
And how long has Bloomington had theirs installed, do you know?
Um, the first time I saw, I can't answer that directly, but I was there in like two thousand and two for a tour, and it was in operation then.
And do they continue to get taste and odor complaints?
They do, yes. Um, so it's a layered approach, as, as Doug had, uh, alluded to, you know, you, the more of these things you can put in place and afford, right? The, the better chance you have to ride through these high, typically seasonal taste and odor issues without any big event, so.
Alderman Redpath.
As you know, Todd, I was, uh, at the Lake Homeowners Association meeting last week when this was brought up, and Mayor was there, obviously. Um, there was pretty much outrage from the homeowners out there who understand that the thirteen pods that are going to go from the power plant down to, uh, the bridge, Lindsay Bridge, are going to be right in the middle of the area. Um, are you guys concerned with any liability issues about, about somebody running into these things? Because they're ten-foot wide, and they float on the water, and they're anchored at, at the base. And then they come out with a, there'll be solar panels on them because they're going to be solar, am I correct on this?
Yeah, so far you're doing a, a good explanation.
Solar panels. And are we sure that they're going to be able to do the job?
So, when you say do the job, I guess that's a, a loaded question. I, I'm certain they'll improve lake health at the north end of the lake. Um, can we guarantee no taste and odor events by the implementation of this technology? No, we can't guarantee that, so, I mean, I guess it's kind of an unanswered, but.
So, explain, so explain to us again, uh, why we can't use the pumps that are in the, the abandoned plants that we have? Because that did the same exact thing was, that would, that, when those things were running, we didn't have this issue. And why can't we use those?
Yeah, um, so, we don't have the thermal component, um, now with, with the plants thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three shut off, and it has to do with the circulation of the lake in the appropriate, I guess, manner. So these things won't pull off the very bottom of the lake, like the pumps did it at Dollman, but there's no thermal component to keep that water that's pulled off the, the bottom on top. So these will pull about mid-span down, maybe about fifteen feet down, and they'll bring that water to the surface and continue to do this. And it's basically, what you're trying to do is, um, eliminate cyanobacteria, which is a bacteria that causes these taste and odor events in lieu of some other type of, I'm sorry, algae, in lieu of some other type of algae that are a little more, I guess, I guess friendly to, um, the treatment process.
And, and the, the, it's caused by the bacteria, the algae dying on the bottom of the lake, is that correct?
It's the algae, right, so the algae decay, and then as a result of their decay, they produce these MIB and GOS.
And we're going to use solar-powered motors to, to drive that, uh, that, that drop, that, that motor? And is it, and it's an experimental thing, right, and it, right now for us, it's experimental, we don't know it's going to work.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I know it'll improve the lake health, now, does it take the edge off to where we can get that parts per million, or that nanograms per liter of MIB in the fall down to a level at which the carbon can pull it out? I mean, that's yet to be seen, but, but we know it'll improve the health of the lake.
Is there any, is there any, when we do this, and we spend a half a million dollars on, on these pumps, and next year people are saying that the taste of the water is bad, the smell still, then what are we going to do?
Right, and I mean, that's, again, that's a loaded question in that, you know, if we have, have background concentrations of last year of like a hundred and fifty nanograms per liter as MIB, that was our issue, right? We were pulling most of that out, but we couldn't get it with the carbon product that you, ordinance you just passed. We couldn't get it down below the human threshold, which is ten nanograms per liter. Um, you know, at, at a hundred and fifty, with the, this layered approach, we'd probably be fine. But, you know, that's not to say that, I mean, a hundred and fifty nanograms per liter is, um, MIB is not like huge in proportion to some water supplies, I mean, they see a lot more than that, so.
So is there any other technologies that we've looked at other than this?
Yeah, so we are going to look at some other technologies, and they're more treatment-based, they're at the treatment plant. Um, they're usually involve huge capital expenditures, you know, and I'd hate to throw out a number because I don't know what that number would be, but it's in the tens of millions of dollars type, uh, range. But they're not all compatible with the treatment schemes that you have in place. So like a UV peroxide system, it's pretty effective in some applications, or a lime softening treatment plant. So that makes it less effective, and it means you got to feed a lot of other types of chemicals. So, we are going to get the, um, assistance of a, of a, an engineer on this one, and bring ordinance to you very soon under ARPA funds to kind of complete that study and see if there's any other layers of protection we could build into the treatment scheme, and whether we could afford those layers of treatment.
And why don't we wait until we see if the chemical applications work? One of the things that a couple of the people said at the meeting that night is, why isn't the treatment part of our, our, our system taking care of this? I mean, I, everybody, uh, everybody that has a lake is going to have a similar situation. And, 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 and for the, the taste of the water and that kind of thing, our chemicals, our filter plant should be able to handle this if we're, if, if, unless we're not using the right chemicals. There's, is there some way that that's not possible?
Okay, no, I would argue that with the treatment train we have in place, we did the very best we could. So, um, it was just, a, a carbon-based product is not going to pull extreme amounts of, um, MIB out of the, out of the water to that level. It got most of it, but not enough to get it below the threshold when the lake spiked that high. I mean, I guess, just to point you back to the last ordinance, if you go back and look at the graphs and performance graphs on that ordinance, that was not a low-cost or true-bid ordinance. We picked the very best carbon we can find to pull these chemicals or these MIB and Geosmen out of the water. So it's not, um, yeah, we don't select a, a low-bid type option here. We select the best performance we can get out of the carbon, and still it's not enough at times.
This the same carbon we used last year?
No, it's a slightly different, it's, uh, materially, it's not, not much different, but has slightly improved performance.
Um, Todd, real quick, and then, Leke, she'll get, you'll go next. Um, I, a, a couple of questions that I have is, number one, by using these pumps, um, will it cause odor or, at the lake itself, I mean, with, with the homeowners and, and that? And number two, are they safe at night? Are they going to have the lights and everything? Because that, my biggest concern is, is safety. When you have anything floating in the water at night, and it, if you're out, if you've ever been out on the lake, it, it gets very dark at times. And, uh, man, I could see somebody.
Right.
Especially when you have so many in a, in a, in a area. But, the other part is, is this going to cause, you, you know, when the water churns up, you have the, have the dead fish smell as it is, when you live out there, or if you're, if you're out boating or whatever, is it going to cause that?
So, the first part of that question, no, I don't believe you, you see any of that, uh, odor that you're talking about. We're not turning water from the bottom of the lake in this application. One of the key things is that if you're going to implement this type of technology, you have to do it early in the season. You know, to go out there in the middle of an MIB run or something, you could make things worse. You have to kind of what I call prime your lake and make sure that you get these, these what I call good algae kind of predominating or, um, dominating the species in the lake so that you don't have this big run of cyanobacteria in the fall. Um, so, no, I don't think that will be an issue. Um, as far as safety goes, yeah, again, there's some concern that you're going to put eighteen of the, or, I'm sorry, thirteen of these things out in the lake. Um, they come equipped with beacons, so you can have them flash whatever type of signal you want them to flash. I mean, we had planned on putting buoys around them as well, if that's not sufficient, and, and illuminating them that way. But, uh, I'd, I'd say six, so, there's, of the thirteen, we're working our way from the intake structure back that, to Lindsay Bridge, about six or seven of them will be kind of embedded in that area around the power plant and the hot ditch and kind of that area north, which is, I mean, there's some recreation, but not a lot of skiing and some, I guess, high-velocity activities there, recreational activities. Then there'd be six or so that, you know, we'd really have to strategically place in locations to kind of avoid some of those issues that you're referring to.
I just, I, I kind of feel like we haven't done, we're, we're doing this to show that we're doing something, but it, if it's, I don't want to see us throw five hundred thousand dollars away just to say we're doing something. We, you know, we want to make sure something works. Uh, Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, I, I'm glad that you all took me through the tour because I would not understand half of what you just said. But wouldn't the, when I was in the filter room, wouldn't that eight to twelve filters, wouldn't that help with some of this too? What Chuck was just talking about?
Yeah, not with these concentrations of MIB. It's just too small, um, you're not going to get any type of particular removal that's going to aid in the removal of these small minute numbers of MIB and Geosmen that get in the water. I mean, I guess I, so just as a pointer reference, so like, when I talk about a nanogram per liter, that's like two grains of sand in an Olympic-sized swimming pool, that's what you're trying to find, so. I mean, it's an extremely small, I can't even believe, being even in the science space, that we can analyze down to that level.
Alderman Redpath. Are, are you done, I'm sorry?
I'm done.
Oh, Alder, Alderwoman Conley for.
Thank you, I, um, first of all, I just want to say, thank you both, um, for, for looking into this, and I understand, we, we did get a lot of complaints, um, about something that's a very natural occurrence at the lake. I personally, I usually, I always put lemon in my water, so I didn't, it didn't bother me as much. Um, but, that's just me, it, it, there was a smell and there was a taste. And, and our, our water supply is a significant service that, that you provide. And, and I know that you take a lot of pride in, in how this is, is managed. So I appreciate all of this very much, so please understand these questions are more just kind of, um, it is, it is over half a million dollars, but then, when you're talking about modifying an existing water treatment structure to add other treatment types in there, I mean, we're probably talking tens of millions?
Um, yeah, that, if, if you had made me guess, I would say in that ten, twenty, thirty million dollar range for a huge capital project like that.
And how flush is our water account right now?
It is not, yes. We certainly couldn't support that type of effort without a major, with some, some form of rate increase, yeah.
Yeah, and I just, obviously, I mean, I have some questions about it, I haven't seen a whole lot on this. Um, I appreciate you gave a presentation to the lake home, but this is something that impacts the entire city. Um, so, that's why, I mean, those are where my questions are coming from. I've looked at some of the complaints at Bloomington, it, it does seem like, um, you know, when we had our complaints, I was also going back and, and trying to look at similar, um, similar cities. So knowing that they have this in there, they do still get complaints about water quality. Um, but they don't seem as, to last as long as ours did. And this was an unusually long period of time where people had complaints. And so I, I'm wondering, do you think, like, if our summers are getting longer and hotter, is that going to have a bigger impact on, on how long this turnover period, this turnover phase lasts?
Um, yeah, I, I, I mean, I would say that nationally, yeah, there, it, it was a big year this last fall for, um, surface water bi, or surface water reservoir-type, um, treatment plants and taste and odor issues. So Bloomington's kind of been up and down, you know, they've had some big runs in some years, they've kind of missed it. They do have a couple of different tools that we don't, you know, they have this system in the lake, and then they, they actually have two lakes, so they will look at the first lake, and they will look at these background, ground concentrations of algae byproducts, and if they're better in another, in their other lake, um, they will pull from that lake. So they'll kind of switch between lakes, and, um, they have GAC filters in lieu of the PAC fil, or PAC system that we've got, but that's functionally the equivalent.
So if they've had this in place for, um, over a decade, what's, and you've, I'm, I'm sure you've looked into this, what's the lifespan of these units? If we put half a million in now, are we looking at, at them still working in fifteen years? And, and so that kind of reduces the per-year cost.
Right, I mean, I think to, to get over twenty years would probably be a stretch, for sure. Um, I would say you're in that fifteen-year life cycle, ten-to-fifteen-year life cycle for something like this.
And I, do they come with warranties for damage and, and things like that?
They do, there's a protection program you can purchase as well, where it just kind of warrants it, not only warrants it, but guarantees against anything. So if you had have some natural event that, uh, would happen, you know, big winds, and this sat and the other would happen to damage them, that they could be protect, protected under that program. That's not included in this proposal, but it, uh, they do offer that service.
And how much would that cost? Maybe just that's a cost.
I do have that number, but, but I hate to throw out a number, it's, it's small in comparison to the number we've got here.
And do we have, um, and I just don't know this, but do we have ordinances in place for boats that cause, or, you know, people who cause damage to CWLP equipment through negligence?
Um, not that.
We can recoup that as, as.
Yeah, I, I'll have to defer, I, I, not that I'm aware of, but, uh, I'll claim that that's not necessarily my area of expertise, so.
It's not mine either. Um, okay, so I, I would just, I guess I would like to know just a little bit more about, you know, if we make this investment, which is, it's a big investment, but it's not huge in the, you know, the overall scheme of your budget and, and the importance of our water supply. I'd like to know a little more about other ways that we make sure that we protect the investment.
Right.
Kind of moving forward, so.
So, yeah, it is a big, it is a lot of money, um, but like you said, it's small in comparison to any other approach that we may try. And, and again, those other approaches take years to, to roll in, design, and implement, so.
I think, and think, I mean, I, it's, it's good to know that there are di, different options out there.
There are, and usually the layered protection approach is probably the best you can do against something like this, right? You minimize the levels as they come into your plant, and then you have treatment schemes that can handle those levels, and that gives you your best shot of staying out of one of these runs like we had in the fall.
And we also just entered into a contract, didn't we, was it last year or this year, to do, um, a nutrient loading study? Doug, do you remember that?
Well, we're always, uh, working out in the watershed with best management practices, trying to keep the, uh, nutrients, the farm nutrients out of the, out of the lake. You know, you have varying degrees of success, but yeah, certainly if we can keep the nutrients out of the lake, um, which is difficult to do in an agriculturally-based watershed, um, you're not going to have much algae growth. So we're working on that end with multiple million-dollar grants as well.
That might have been the monitors.
Thank you.
Alderman Redpath, and then Alderman Gregory.
So Todd, how are we maintaining these, and what's gonna be the mechanism for anchoring them into the lake? Because I can tell you, if we're using buoys, our buoys never stay in place. It's a struggle for our security and our lake services people to keep them in the right places. So, once they veer off their path, if they get away from us, then, what she was, what Alderman Connolly was talking about, about negligence, we also gotta talk about liability. Because if they're moved and people don't know that they've moved, and they're out there at night and they run into them, we're gonna be liable.
Yep. I mean, they are anchored to the, to the bottom of the lake. Probably a picture would tell a thousand words there, and that's something we could provide next week. If you'd like a short presentation from myself or the manufacturer, we could show you exactly what they look like, how they operate. You might even have a little video to kind of describe, you know, the biological process that they kind of enhance.
I think that would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that was one of my questions, if I may understand. It's just that I think that would help out. And, and then my, my other question on page, 26 of 30 in, in the actual documents. I seen that it says if the city would like brand-new S B H Ws, add 220 to the price. Can you, can you touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, so this company's also got a leasing program. You could rent these things. And the thought process, these are refurbished units that were in a lake for a year or so that were leased. And the thought here was to keep this ordinance and the investment in these things. I mean, they come with the same warranty and everything else as low as we could.
Yep.
Given all the needs we've got for ARPA funds everywhere else in the city.
Appreciate you.
All right, anybody else? Okay, oh, Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so I keep hearing about nighttime and maybe running into and can't see. So, so is there, what time does this lake close, or is it just you can do the lake all night?
All night.
You can vote all night if you want to.
So there's no time limit?
Right.
So if you set a time limit, wouldn't that help with lowering some of the liability and some of the chance of people wanting?
It would. I, you, you would, Chuck wouldn't have some, Alderman Redpath wouldn't have some happy lake homers.
There might be a riot.
Yeah.
I mean, listen, if, if it's that serious that they bring it up here and say people may run into and all this stuff, and they can't see, maybe we should curtail how late it is that they can be out there.
And again, we take that.
That we, we don't, our parks, we close.
So.
At a certain time.
We take that, you know, that liability aspect seriously, obviously, but there's, uh, there's a lot of different obstacles out in the lake, you know. We just have to properly illuminate these things and make sure the beacons were working. And if that wasn't sufficient, add additional lighting to them, and we just have to work through that. And, you know, we're, the, the manufacturer will come in here and show you exactly where he wants these things. And that'll be based on optimum lake health, right? We're all realists. We understand that maybe we can't put one there because of liability reasons. And we're open to working with that and trying to get the best solution we can, not only to the lake health, but to the, the recreational users of the lake.
So, so recreational users, again, your answer to me is, uh, the lake's open all night?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor of debate?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it?
2022-006, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 22-11-69, East Dale Substation Bill of Materials with Distran Package Substation LLC in an amount not to exceed $413,737.64 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it?
Public Works, 2022-007, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW 22-11-68 with Green Demolition Contractors Incorporated for the demolition site clearance of the municipal parking garage located at Fourth and Washington Streets in the amount not to exceed $718,180 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent, second.
Debate, please?
Yeah, please.
Definitely.
Debate.
Got a motion for, we had a motion for consent, but someone, when someone says.
Yeah, that, sorry, that was me. I, debate.
Debate. All, we got a motion for debate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second for debate. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it?
2022-008, a resolution authorizing execution of a letter intent between the City of Springfield and State of Illinois for the resurfacing of Fifth Street from Ash Street to Brennire Boulevard, MFT Section Number 22-State-00-RS for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it?
2022-009, an ordinance accepting, authorizing execution of agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of Churchill Road Bridge over Jacksonville Branch, MFT Section 19-00487-00-BR for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes, eyes have it?
Noted. 2022-010, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motorfield tax funds in the amount of $260,000 may be used for the reconstruction of the Churchill Road Bridge over the Jacksonville Branch, MFT Section Number 19-00487-00-BR for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
President?
Eyes have it?
Noted. 2022-0011, or 011, an ordinance authorizing payment to Azteca Systems LLC for joint purchase of City Works Enterprise License Agreement and Maintenance from April 15, 2022 through April 14, 2023 for the Offices of Public Works and Public Utilities for the amount not to exceed $157,500.
Do I have a motion? Motion for consent? I got a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Alderman McMenamin.
Director Bottom, does, I think the inner-city older neighborhood is interested in this ordinance, and does this enhance the capabilities of the public to interact with the City Works?
This, this is solely for the enterprise licensing agreement, so this is just for the software licensing, which allows both Public, Public Works and Public Utilities to utilize the software. However, we continuously make improvements to reporting through the portal and various aspects to, to make us more transparent. And I'll talk a little bit more about that on Thursday night. I was trying to, trying to save that for, for Thursday. But we are, we are, we are, yes, planning on improving our transparency and getting more maps out there that utilize the data that is from City Works.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it?
2022-012, an ordinance authorizing a one-year renewal of contract number PW 21-19 with Habitat for Humanity, Sangamon County, for collection, recycling and disposal of bulky, large items for an amount not to exceed $250,000.
Move for consent.
Second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you. I'm very excited to see this ordinance going through, that we're continuing this. Yeah, I, Director, I, I just, I have a request, because I've run into this a couple of times now with constituents who either have questions or have received citations for having bulky items that need to be removed from their property. Could we please incorporate some more education and awareness about this program with citations so that people are aware if, you know, you've got, I'm just gonna make, I'm not gonna use an example from my constituents, but a broken-down couch sitting in your front yard that they just aren't able to get rid of, that they're aware of the fact that the city has this program, and they can, they can schedule a pickup and make it easy so that they understand how to get to it, so they don't have to go through our website, but just, this is what you're being cited for, and this is how you solve it.
Yes, we can definitely do that, and I'll work with the Communications Director as well to get the word out even more.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Lawn Furniture.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it?
2022-013, an ordinance authorizing a one-year renewal contract, number PW 21-20 BLH Computers Incorporated for collection, recycling and disposal of electronic waste for an amount not to exceed $100,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Got a motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it?
General City Business, 2022-014, an ordinance authorizing a sponsorship payment of $300 to Abraham Lincoln Association for the annual Lincoln banquet pursuant to Article V I I, Chapter 37, Section 37.62 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code Ordinances, as amended for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Move for consent.
Got a motion and second for consent. Any discussion? Alderman McMenamin.
Discussion, Mr. Chair. There's been a change, there's been a change on the date for this event, so we just want the ordinance to reflect the new date. The, the new date is June 21. They've had to postpone this annual meeting of the Abraham Lincoln Association.
June 21.
So it'd be June 21.
So do we need an amendment to this, or does it, does it, do we just say whenever it, it goes off, or?
With, with that consensus, I'll make sure that the date is reflected, the correct date. We'll just simply correct the date sensitive with that. Very good.
That's great. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it?
2022-015, an ordinance authorizing a decreased number of Class A D and E liquor licenses due to failure to renew for 2022.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Got a motion and second for consent. Has, have we, real quick, do we, have we notified these, these licensees that their license is getting pulled, or to where, I'm just wondering, does it need to be debated in case they, they want to attend next week and argue their, or? I don't care either way.
I was gonna say, if you, if you would like to, I would just say that we, I, I know for certain there's been at least two or three letters with grace periods.
Okay.
Trying to allow people, if you would like to, just on the chance there might perhaps be someone, if you would like to put it on debate, there's certainly no problem with that.
What's the council's, would you rather do that?
There's five restaurants on this list. It might not be a bad idea to put it on debate.
Debate it is.
Okay, got it. So who, who had the motion for consent?
This is my second time.
You go to, will you?
Yeah, motion for debate.
Second.
Okay, a motion and second for debate?
Who's second in it, please?
Second.
I did, but I, I take it back.
Yeah, I understand, John. Thank you.
Must be picking the wrong things to make the motion for consent tonight.
Well, I just was thinking about that, that, that they may want to come and plead their case in front of council. Hopefully, you know, it's a done deal, but Alderman Redpath?
Corporation Council, do, how do we send those letters? Are they just regular mail? Or we send them registered, or how do we do that?
I will, I'll have to check on that. I think that it's both by, I believe it is by regular mail. I'll check on that, but we also do actual contacts via like email and phone. So there's, there's more than, I think, more than one effort, but I'll find out for sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we got a motion, a second for debate. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it?
Noted. 2022-016, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class B liquor licenses by one due to closure of business by S and A Liquor Incorporated, doing business as S and A Liquor located at 2001 East Jackson Street.
Move for consent.
Second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion?
Well, shouldn't we do the same thing for this one?
No.
They're closed.
It's closed. They're gone. They're, they're closed.
All right, good, okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it?
Noted. 2022-017, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by the Rail, Rail Yard LLC, doing business as Rail Yard located at 2242 South Sixth Street.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it?
President.
Noted. 2022-018, an ordinance authorizing to decrease the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to closure of business by Galena's Pizza LTD, doing business as Galena's Pizza located at 3133 South Dirksen Parkway.
Got a motion?
Motion for consent.
Second.
Got a motion and second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it?
Noted. 2022-019, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Patricia Señor Carter to the Springfield Civil Service Commission.
Move for debate?
Debate.
Got a motion and a second for debate? Real quick, we just, we just acted on her, what, two months ago?
For just here.
She must have done a great job for two months, huh?
Yeah.
Is there any questions for?
Thanks for your service.
Any questions? All right, I think you're.
Thanks for coming down here.
Well, thank you for having me again, and actually, it's been a very eye-opening experience, and I just am so thankful for the opportunity to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it?
2022-020, an ordinance authorizing execution of CHDO Subrecipient Grant Agreement, Number 21-SR-0006 with NEMI Expansion Incorporated for the family development of 40 new single-family mixed-income rental homes utilizing community housing development organization, CHDO, funds in an amount not to exceed $1,200,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and second for consent. Any discussion? Alderwoman Connolly.
I would just like to say, I, I appreciate that this ordinance is coming forward. We obviously have a need for, for new housing, especially for lower-income individuals, and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing these go in. What's your timeline for construction?
Spring of '23.
Okay, for completion?
Uh, no, to start.
Starting, okay.
So the, the full application is just going in February 14th. Takes 60, 90 days for approval, and then six months or so to close on it, and then we start construction. So finishing up the first ones probably middle, summer, '23.
'23. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
All right, any other discussion? Sean, I'm sorry.
Short, short comment. You, you've done this in our community before. You, you built some houses. I assume you're from Windsor, correct?
I'm sorry, I can't hardly agree.
I'm sorry. You, you've done plenty of these in our community before, correct?
Yes, sir.
I believe you're from Windsor. How many houses have, have you done? What, what would this make, push us to?
A little over 1,000.
I appreciate you.
In the Midwest.
Appreciate you. Happy, happy to get this wrong.
Yes, sir. Go ahead. Oh, I can make a couple of comments. NEMI Expansion is gonna submit an application to Ida for low-income housing tax credits in an amount of 9.4 million. They're gonna submit a mortgage application to a local bank for 2.2 million dollars, and they're here asking for 1.2 million from the city, and there's some other monies involved too, but they're smaller. These homes will be available for people making 60% of the median income or less. The phase, this phase is Phase Four of single-family homes that Silas has done on the east side. The first phase was started in 2007, the second in 2011, the third in 2014, and this will be submitted in 2022. In 2014, just after Silas got awarded the tax credits for Phase Three, he got the Governor's Award for Excellence in Affordable Housing. And there's only four given out per year when they give them out. So he is being recognized for doing a, a good job. And then we're just reaching a point next year where he'll be able to start selling the homes from Phase One. Two people in the same income ranges that are qualified for them now. And from what I understand, you got six or seven people kind of undergoing what it takes to become a homeowner next year?
Yes, Silas Johnson, my name, we have frog in the throat, preacher got a frog in his throat. We have a basically, 20 houses be sold, and we want to have them all sold, at least 90, 50% of them by the end of this project, when this project ends. One is approved now, and then we got seven more in the process of.
Good girl.
See, I, I see, I, I see she, she knows something about a preacher, all right. So, so we, we appreciate your, your.
Good job.
Consent and to support this project. It would make a, it'll make a huge.
Yes.
When I say huge, a huge difference for the east side housing project. housing project. And I would, and I get a preacher mic, but I would ask you to just go look now what is there, and then after we finish the project, look again and see the drastic difference it's going to make. Can't wait, please.
Thank you for your leadership.
Silas, thank you for everything you do. You do a good job out there. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Let's start off with the mayor.
Just a reminder, there's a vaccination clinic at the YMCA on Carpenter from 9:00 to 3:00 on Saturday for five years of age and older, along with booster shots.
Okay, Alderwoman Conley.
Yeah, an unfinished business. Mayor, are we going to see this fire report, the consultant's report? It's been, it's been next week for about two or three months now, I think, so maybe a month, I'm exaggerating.
Yeah, actually, Director McCarthy is contacting them about a presentation. Oh, here he is. Come on back, come on up. So, see, he comes up when there's good news to report, and he hides when there's bad news.
He's hanging back in the corner right now.
I spoke with the consultants last night, one of them, and he was going to get with his other, there were a group of them, going to get with them to see when they can come and present it to the council. In the next two to three weeks is what we've asked for.
Okay, so is there a final report?
So the report, we have a draft that the mayor and Mr. Zirkel and I, we're going to try and get together and go over one last time today, and we couldn't find time to do that, so we need to do that, and then it'll be finalized, and then we can send it out whenever he's ready.
Real quick, hold on real quick. This is inexcusable, and it's unacceptable. I'm sorry, we've got, we've got their budget coming up. We've had this out there since July. Reggie, sorry, I told you I wasn't going to get mad tonight, but we've had it since, we've had this thing going since July. We should have this thing. People are talking, you're talking about it on the radio. We don't know a thing about it. It should be here now, because we got to meet with these guys on their budget, and that's not fair to them either. We have to know about this, we're going to get it after the fact, when the budget's over. The idea of doing it early was so we could have it for the budget, and we need it for the budget. It's inexcusable.
I understand.
Alderman Conley.
Finally first, and then the mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Hanauer, for expressing my thoughts.
Mayor.
Thank you. You'll have the report next week. We have to make sure that there's nothing glaring in it, have a last review. I don't know how many pages it is, but you'll have it at the beginning of next week, so you'll have it before the budget. It's nothing that we're happy about, you know, it's, we did change the parameters with regards to relocation of fire stations. What's been talked about on the radio had nothing to do with the report. I mean, nothing that I've talked about on the radio has been, or with the news media, has been about the report. It's about moving forward. So that's what we intend to do. The report's part of that, of course, but everybody has their own personal opinion, the union has their opinion, the chief has his opinion, everybody around the horseshoe has their opinion, Director McCarthy has his opinion, and the consultants have their opinion. So we'll have that to you by the beginning of next week.
If I could ask, please, how many pages is this report?
Oh, a couple hundred, maybe?
So we're going to get a couple hun, of report of a couple hundred pages next week, right before we get the budget, right before we have our budget conversation with the fire department. I mean, we have what, this eight-inch, but, no, I'm sorry, let me finish, please.
Okay.
We got our budget books the Friday before we started these hearings this week, and now we're going to get a couple hundred pages on one of the critical pillars of safety for this community. There, how are we supposed to look through that? I mean, I also have a full-time job, I have a family, and I want to give my best to this position. It is, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get upset tonight either, it's been a long day, but you can't have a council that's effective and serves our constituents if we're not getting information in a timely manner. And if you're telling me there's a 100-page report, and you still at this point don't know if that draft is acceptable, then give us the draft and let us look at it. But this, this is, it's disrespectful of every council member around this horseshoe. It's disrespectful of the chief and the fire department that we can't, as a community, have a conversation about a report that the way it's been sold is that this is going to lead to big changes and how we move forward with our fire department. I can't know what the plan is if I'm given a 100-page report.
Couple hundred.
Couple hundred-page report a day or two before we're looking at a budget, which, by the way, currently has overtime funded for this fire department at significantly lower than what they've done, gone through this year. I mean, it's, I'll leave it at that. You understand where I am? This is disrespectful.
I do want to clarify one thing, that the budget does not reflect anything in the report. There are no changes to operations or anything else in the budget. There was never an expectation that this report would be part of that process.
There absolutely was.
Changes can have, you can have time to review, and conversations, policy conversations will have to happen between the council and the mayor.
But let me correct you, Director McCarthy, no.
The budget is not part of that.
That's absolutely not true, because we were just told that we're looking at firehouse station locations, now it's four instead of three. These are things that I understand come from this report, so yeah, that absolutely has a budget impact, and that's in the budget.
As the mayor indicated earlier in his statements, the three firehouses for sure were already well in process before the report. Had nothing to do with that, that was already in process.
But see, again, we don't even have an idea. I asked you, I emailed you a while ago and said, where's the RFP for this report that we put out? There was no RFP, there was no parameters that were set that you could share with me so that I would know what this report was doing. So yeah, I'm frustrated, because I have a duty to the constituents in Ward Eight, A, to make sure that their safety is ensured, that we're fiscally responsive, and that we're looking into a plan that makes sense for them. And I can't say that I do that when I've got, we just talk about it as the report. I don't even know what was, what are we even looking for in this report? I mean. I'm sorry, I'm done, thank you.
Not, and this isn't just on you, Director McCarthy.
Sure.
I brought this up a few weeks ago. As a whole, we get things last minute. I found out on the news last night that there were now four locations.
Yep.
I didn't hear it from anyone here. So, you know, again, things come in Tuesday. I can't check my email throughout the day, I'm working. So it's very frustrating, as Alderman Conley just stated, to try to do this job and try to serve our constituents. Again, not all on you.
Sure, I understand.
But we have got to be given information in a timely manner. It's a must, and it's not happening. And I just want to know when it's going to stop, or when something new is going to start, because right now, this isn't working. And I don't know if that's the point. I don't know if that's the point of having an ineffective council, but that's what we are right now.
Yep.
Alderman, just McMenamin.
I, there's some folks who are kind of excited tonight about this, and I understand that, because I got a call, you know, regarding the Ward Eight fire station, and I don't need anyone to say, come on to me. And so when, you know, we listen to you, now you can just listen to the other points of you on the council.
Hey, just get to your point, and let's, let's.
Yeah, but she's harassing you.
Just get to your point, or you're out of order.
You got to call that to everybody, Mr. Chair.
Get to your point, or you're out of order. Let's go.
Calling me out of order for just trying to get some respect, Mr. Chair. So I think there's concern about fire stations being closed, but I think what we got to remember is that what's being talked about is a strategic plan. It doesn't, the budget's not going to lock us into property acquisition, the budget's not going to lock us in to abandoning a fire station. It's going to be a strategic plan that we're going to be able to think about and discuss, and then when those real estate transactions come to us, where we have to purchase property to relocate a fire station, that's when we can, you know, kick in, and we can say no or yes. I think it's appropriate for the executive branch to kind of think things through. Now, I think there've been some loose pieces to this, because really, you should shut up until you really got the strategic plan out there, ready to be presented to everybody, including the older persons, and that, I think that's got to be cleaned up. But I think we just got to be realizing that this budget is not going to lock us into the plan. It's just going to be a plan, and we can think it through and make the appropriate steps if we agree with the strategic plan.
I think the complaint is, is this happens all the time.
Well, and also, I don't know what this plan is. I mean, Alderman McMenamin, you do make a good point. We're not locked in, but I don't know that we are or not, because I still don't know the scope of what this report looks at. And to be sitting on this council and not have that basic information, again, is disrespectful to everyone around this horseshoe. And Director McCarthy, I'm, you get the blame, you get the voice directed at you, because if I turn my head too many times, my neck gets sore again, but my, it is, it is a difficult position that we're put in, and it makes it harder for us to represent our constituents. And I get a lot of contact about our fire department. People are very supportive, and I can't, I still, I still can't say anything to them about what we're looking at. I mean, this is a strategic plan. What, what's the framework that's even being asked for, for us to plan? That has not been made clear to us. So I've overspoken my piece, and Alderman McMenamin, I do apologize for, no, I apologize for interrupting you, but I want you to say, when you say people are getting upset, so that throws a little shade at me, and I'm going to respond to that. I am speaking.
Okay, let's move on.
No, one more thing. I am speaking from the voices of people who are contacting me with significant concerns about a critical safety infrastructure, and so when I speak my mind on that, that's not upset. It may sound forceful, it may get my voice a little raised, but I'm not taking that. So that's, that's why I spoke out, and I apologize, you're right, I did interrupt.
All right, any other new business?
That was unfinished.
Mayor? Or unfinished business, I guess. I'm, I'm, Mayor, you were.
I'll give it all last.
Okay.
I just want to bring something, I know everyone's going to be shocked when I bring this up, but there was a house fire, I believe, on 19th Street a few weeks ago, and there was a dog that was in the fire, and the animal control was called in the middle of the night, and no one answered. No one came out for this dog. I know it's shocking, and I know you're shocked to hear me say this. So people are scrambling to try to find a home or a safe place for this dog at 3:00 in the morning, and that's not what we pay for. So just another note that we're not getting the service that we are supposed to be getting from animal control.
And I'd ask Chief Winslow to come forward, this is last council meeting.
Oh, boy.
Chief.
Because we almost needed him.
But trust me, you'll know when we need him.
Bill, you could have called him up when you're up there.
Yeah, Chief Winslow served the City of Springfield 27 years, and I asked him today, he served nine years as police chief. And I'll give you, well, someone's giving it off. Anyway, with regards to that, he's the longest-serving police chief that this city has ever had. So we really appreciate for what he's done, and he always gives credit, which is, credit is due, is to the frontline of the police department, the men and women of our police department. You know, I've said it when we do the swearing-ins, when we do the promotions, they're, no offense to the other departments, they're my favorite department because they put their lives on the line each and every day, and they don't know what they're walking into. I mean, we've seen what's happened through the pandemic, we had the social unrest, people said, how did Springfield do it? It's through community engagement, and it's working together. And the chief has changed the culture within the police department, and we really thank him for what he's done, it's been a tough job, and we really appreciate you stepping up to guide us through these toughest hours of Springfield's history that I'm aware of, or one of the toughest hours, I should say. But you look at what he's gone through, and it's the men and women of the police department as well, as well as fire department, all our departments. But you had the pandemic, nobody knew what was happening, we're shutting down, you had the social unrest, a lot of divisiveness, and we were able to keep it together. And that's largely due to the representation of council members, it's with the police department's engagement that really made it happen, and we really appreciate your great leadership. There's these difficult times, and there's many others that I'm not going to dive into, but it reads government of the people, by the people, for the people. By Abraham Lincoln, of course, and appreciation for your leadership and public service to the City of Springfield, we commend Kenneth Winslow for his commitment, sincerity, and dedication to the residents, neighborhoods, and community. Springfield Police Officer from 1995 to 2010, Springfield Police Commander from 2010 to 2013, and Springfield Police Chief from 2013 to 2022. On behalf of the city council, myself, and all our residents, we really thank you for your great service. Congratulations.
Actually, you know, just blessed, humbled, honored to have a chance to serve for 27 years. It's flown. Been great to work with the everyday heroes. I talk about our officers and the fact they go above and beyond, they selflessly give themselves every day, and they're everyday heroes. I see it, I see the reports, I see the body worn camera, it really brings it into a new light of what they do out there. And it's really them, it's them, they go above, they've sacrificed a ton over the years from the recession, and going from 284 officers down to 225, and back to 250, back today, where we're still got 29 in training and 30 openings, and they're, they're doing more with less, they're, I feel like we're the Walmart, always constantly more with less. But with that said, it's their dedication to keep our community safe, and it's all about them. And I've been blessed with great teams and great people around me. It ain't always been easy, it's never easy being a boss, but my heart was always in the right place, I think. I always try to do what was right for the community, for the department, for the council, everybody, and I just thank everybody for their friendship and support over the years. And I'm going to miss everybody, going to miss the job, going to miss the people, but again, you know, it's really about them, so thank you.
Any other new business? We have exec session, let's see, do we have, what's next, exec session?
Citizens.
Citizens to address the committee? Any citizens to? All right, we have an executive session for Mr. Zirkel.
Personnel-related matters.
Personnel-related matters.
Got a motion?
Got a motion? All in favor?
That side over there, I don't know, what we, what we going to do with them? That side over there, boy, that. Make it hot, make it hot.
All right, I'll bring the committee back in session. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Come on, Mr. Chairman.
Oppo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. That here.
Go. Coming? You want to go to the gate?